I wouldn't.
Surely did.
I don't know. That's something we're gonna have to.
Okay, bear with me, my coming and going here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone. State your name and address for the record. Discuss your proposed project and or request for variance. After you're done and we're done with questions for you, the floor will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had the opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After the public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, the planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have all five members present. I will now call the roll. Ms. Resonetti. Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Ms. Bucci. Mr. Landers. And Mr. Donovan is present. Did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
Any comments, changes?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for February 13th.
Can I get a second over there? All in favor? Aye, that's you and I. Are you, were you abstained or? Okay. All right, good. That's unanimous then. All right, we're up to our public hearings and I did not print this thing out properly, did I? So our first, and we're a little early. You think it's okay? Is the applicant here? Okay, you guys ready? Okay. Our first and I believe only case for tonight is 30 Brown Street Center Line Communications LLC. It's a area variance to construct a 110-foot-tall telecommunications tower in the I-2 light medium industrial district. Maximum allowable is 65 feet. Therefore, the height variance and also the towers are supposed to have a setback from all property lines to provide for a fall zone. And this would require a 59-foot variance for this property. Hi, welcome to our merry band.
Oh, good to be here. So as you stated, you know, first introduce myself.
There you go.
Yep, my name is Jeff Twitty. I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T and City Switch. Business address is 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York.
Hello. Ready? My name is Brenda Blast Lewis. I'm a site acquisition consultant with Centerline Communications and 763 Eatonville Road, Herkimer, New York.
Absolutely. So as you said, AT&amp;T is proposing to construct a 110-foot monopole-style telecommunications tower at 30 Brown Street. You know, this tower will help to alleviate some capacity issues that the AT&amp;T network is facing on the western side of the city and I believe some of the coverage that will, or capacities that will be, you know, provided by this facility will also be, you know, benefited to users of the AT&amp;T network in Johnson City and the Town of Union. So what brings us here tonight is the height of the tower itself. It's 110 feet, which of course is above the city's height limitation and also due to the height of the tower relative to the surrounding setbacks. You know, we'll, we'll need a variance for, you know, as it's been said, the fall zone of the tower. We have some information regarding how the, what the fall zone will actually be. This tower will include a breakpoint at approximately 60 feet above ground level that will contain the tower, you know, contain the tower within the property itself, within the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, but, you know, in the very unlikely event of a tower collapse, the tower will fold on itself and will not, you know, fall on adjacent properties. So, you know, that's how we're looking to alleviate that issue for the setback. But, you know, as far as the height of the tower, it's necessary in order to provide the service that AT&amp;T is attempting to provide in this portion of the city. So with that, we respectfully request this variance and we're happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from members of the zoning board of appeals? I'll, I'll start. Is there any, what would happen if the tower was within the limits, if it was only 65 feet tall?
It would not provide sufficient service to the area. So we actually, you know, in submissions to the planning board, and I believe that you all received the submission as well, our engineers prepared propagation studies which effectively show the, you know, degree of coverage that would be provided by the tower at different heights. One of the propagation maps that we prepared, you know, projected what coverage would look like at 59 feet versus 110 feet. And, you know, the 59 feet, really any, many height below that 110-foot mark doesn't accomplish AT&amp;T's goal. So, short answer, we couldn't, we couldn't achieve our goal if it were shorter.
That's what I, that's why I wanted to know. You also mentioned you're putting it like a failure or hinge point. You guys have experience with that elsewhere, I'm assuming?
We do. It's, you know, they're commonly installed in towers such as these. I don't have any experience seeing, you know, what it would look like, you know, in action when a tower falls, if only because it's very unlikely. You know, I don't know if you've ever seen that, but.
In the years that I've been working in telecommunications, I think I've only heard of one tower failure. And like, like he explained, there's a, there's a fail point and it's going to be at 60 feet. So this is 110-foot tower. So if it, if it were to fail, it's not going to fall on anybody else's property. It would stay within the fall zone.
You need, you need her closer.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry about that. That's okay. So if, if the tower were in the unlikely event to fail, it would fail, it would, you know, basically folded on itself. So it would stay within the fall zone. And the fall zone is going to be shown on the final zoning drawings that we're going to present at next meeting for the planning board.
Okay. Any other questions, you guys?
This is only, this would only be an advantage for AT&amp;T customers, is that correct? No other cell companies?
That is correct. There's room for other carriers to co-locate on the tower. I believe there's two spots for co-location. So, you know, if Sprint or Verizon wanted to come on the tower, they would be able to. But as proposed, this is only AT&amp;T's on the tower so far.
And then also, in relationship to the the distance to the train tracks. I mean, is that going to have any, any kind of ramifications should you have some sort of accident?
Sure, I don't, is that, I don't know if it's act.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the, you know, if the tracks are being used, I'm sure that if they weren't, you guys would probably know better than we would, but.
They are active, they are used.
So if, if the tower were to fail, like I said, it would stay within a 60-foot radius of, you know, of the falls, you know, the tower's 110 feet, it's only going to go 60 feet. If, if it were to fail, it wouldn't hit the tracks.
How far away from that 60-foot zone?
That's what I was, I was just looking at the drawing to see if they had the.
And not only the tracks, but the distance to the road.
Again, it would, it would stay right on the property within.
That's not a guarantee. We, we hope that it stays on the property.
I mean, the way that these are designed, I mean, it would, it doesn't, the way it was explained to me is that when a tower, if it, tower was to fail and it was to break, it doesn't like implode and it's not going to just fall straight over. It's going to kind of just fold in half.
Wait, you said that it, the breakpoint is at 60?
Is at 60 feet.
Right. So is that 60-foot point, is there enough space between that 60-foot point if the base, say, was to tip over into the road or onto the tracks?
It's within the lease area and the lease area is off the road.
Has the train been noticed?
Yes, the, the initial, the ground lease is between City Switch and the railroad.
Okay. And then my other question for you is looking at the pictures you guys submitted with your application. I guess I'm wondering what the percentage difference is in the service area between 85, 95, and 110 feet.
He's got the.
Sure. So I can, so just to be clear, are we looking at exhibit R, this exhibit? Okay. I think he's ready for an answer. Yep. So whenever you're ready. So really, I mean, looking at 16, which shows the 105 antenna center length or ACL versus the 85 ACL. I mean, if you look at where the tower is located, you know, especially, you know, kind of the, the target that it makes, the brown to red to magenta color. You know, it's much more pronounced on the 105, which means that, you know, there's more capacity granted to the surrounding, you know. Yeah, there's, there's more coverage provided to the surrounding neighborhoods than there would be at this 85. So, you know, I think that's the, the main difference going. I can't really speak to a percentage because that's not reflected on the map itself. But it's, you know, you can see it spatially.
What's the wind load engineer at on these? Do you know?
110, 10 miles per hour wind speed.
Any other questions? You don't forget any, any letters submitted?
I don't believe we received any for ZBA, but we did receive letters in opposition from the planning commission. So I don't know if they submitted. I'm assuming they submitted for both ZBA and planning commission, but it was read during the planning commission. It was put into file during the planning commission meeting, so.
But we didn't get that.
Not specifically for ZBA, no.
Okay. I, I see that the planning commission has looked at this project and they tabled it from last month till current month.
Yeah, that's correct. They tabled it for the May 7th. They requested some additional documents.
Okay. Do you know what kind of documents they were looking for? So I, I think, I think the applicant can fill me in here a little bit.
Yep. So I can step in here. They had concerns very similar to this board as far as where the breakpoint would be located and what it would do. So what we're providing now is a map showing where exactly the fall zone would be with the hinge point, a diagram showing how the hinge point would work and a new elevation drawing of the tower itself showing where the hinge point would be located on the tower.
Okay. I believe we'd like to see that as well. I'm assuming based on the questioning. We can request that, can't we?
You can request.
Okay, yeah. Just, just to be thorough. We, we do have some experience with similar kind of projects, but I'd rather ask one question too many than not enough.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Was there any other sites considered?
Yeah, so there's, yep, so there's a site selection report. It is included as exhibit H.
H?
Yep, of the application. And, you know, really just the, the logic behind those, how these are created is, you know, a cell carrier, AT&amp;T in this case, will identify a problem area with respect to coverage and, you know, a given locality. And they'll, you know, really hone in on that area and select a site where they want to locate. So in this particular site selection analysis, they ended up at 30 Brown Street.
Okay.
Pretty central to the area that was in need of boosting.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Stick around for a little bit. We might have a few more questions, but the only guarantee that there's going to be more questions for you is if I let you go now. You can, no, because we're going to have people speaking in, in favor of and against coming up next. Well, you did. I didn't look deep enough, did I?
And it's on. Let's see. It's in. City Switch.
Oh, okay, I missed that. All right. At this point, I think we would.
Now I see where. Planning board has done some here. As far as this, is that going to be our responsibility to move to? Yeah, so we're doing an important interview, so we'll have to do this as well. Okay. And we don't have to, tonight, I mean, the public conference is going to continue over to next week. That's the prediction. Right. So up to you whether or not you want to press. I'd better just do that one next time, really. Okay. And then I can just open the public hearing and start with folks later here. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry for that. I just wanted to make sure we're on the right path here. I was just asking about the coordination of the planning commission's responsibilities versus our zoning board of, of appeals responsibilities. And we're doing essentially separate reviews. So there is no lead agency in this case. So that being said, I would I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for 30 Brown Street for anyone wishing, wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed project. If you could come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Come on down. Huh? All in favor? Thank you very much for keeping me online. I need all the help I can get. Come on down. Is the green light on? Push the button.
Hello?
Little closer.
Okay.
There you go.
Hi, my name's Peg Smith and my husband and I have a business at 40 Brown Street, which is right next door to where this tower is to be built. I think I, first of all, I wanted to find out if I saw another tower similar on Court Street. At 494, maybe Court Street. I was wondering if that was the same type of thing that we're looking at.
Is that over near where 17 cut across?
No, it's on, next to McDonald's on Upper Court Street, you know, Michelangelo's is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, directly across the street, there's a.
It's about the same length. That's taller.
It's taller. I was just checking. I just.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Keep going.
So, and I also noticed that it's, I, I understand you have to have 110 feet and back. And I understand this is a smaller area on 30 Brown Street. And it's being reduced to only being, I don't know, 59 feet maybe or something from the street. And this one here on Court Street is weight, it's back. It's like, looks like probably 110 feet back according to the map. So I'm just wondering how we can fit one in such a small area here on our street on Brown Street. That's a question that I have. And, you know, and it also has the railroad tracks right directly behind it, as does the one on Court Street, has railroad tracks right behind it. And then again, last meeting that we were here, they were talking about putting hedges or trees or something blocking it off. And where our lot is, where our building is, cars back in, tractor trailers back into that lot. And the trees that I saw on Court Street today are, look like they're 15, 18 feet tall. You know, a line of them and another line of them in front. Just want to make sure that if this does go through, that we are still able to get into our lot and do our business that we do and we've been doing for 25, 30 years there. I don't know. And I also am concerned about people who work around us. I know there's a lady across the street that has a pace maker. I know that my brother-in-law that works with us has heart condition. You know, I want to make sure that that kind of stuff isn't going to interfere with their lives. And we have a lot of people that walk on that street. It's not the most beautiful street in the city of Binghamton, but there's a lot of people that use that street. And I'd hate to see anybody, you know, anything happen to anyone or any of our businesses. And I appreciate your time.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that they're limited, if any, health effects from a broadcast tower, but these guys can, can produce information regarding that. Can you guys also provide information regarding the health effects of a tower? Yep. Okay. Yeah, I know the, the power output is way down from what it used to be.
Because I did walk to the one on Court Street and took a picture, what it said on it, so.
Now I have a question for you. You said you saw 15, 18-foot trees over there in Court Street. Would you be looking more for smaller trees or hedges rather than bigger trees?
I think, I mean, just so that we're still able to get our tractor trailers in there. They back in, so, and that's where the dock is. It's not like, there's, there's a lot on the side that they also use that they also use. And that is, they load differently on that, those tractor trailers. But the, some of them are enclosed and they have to back in and that's the side that that happens on. So.
That is your property, correct, that they back in on?
Yes.
I don't believe they would be encroaching on your property.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, no. Yeah, according to the plans, I don't believe they would have the right to encroach on your property. That could be an issue there.
Okay.
But I also understand if they're, if right where your property is abut in this corner, if there's a big tree right there.
Right.
I, I, I hope you guys have taken that into account, the business that's next door, that your, your landscaping is not going to impact them adversely.
So I'm going to jump in here just a little bit. So the, the screen was something that the planning department had requested as part of screening the driveway. It's all going to be on the leased portion of the right-of-way from the railroad, so it shouldn't interfere with anything on your property. There's also a requirement for a maintenance plan. Obviously, if there's some concerns, one of the conditions that can be put on is that, you know, any of those trees or hedges be maintained so that they're not encroaching over any property line.
Well. When I went to Court Street today, they must have just done it this week because it's a disaster over there and they piled it all up, piled it behind so that you can't see it. And as I said, we don't need any more problems on our street.
Yeah.
So just maintained.
Ask you, yes, those trucks that are backing into your property, are they coming in from Matthew Street or are they backing in on Brown Street?
They, they pull up on Brown and back in.
On Brown?
Yeah.
They, is there any way that they could, and I know, I live, you know, on the west side, so I know the area very.
Right.
Is there any way they can pull in, up into Matthew Street and back in differently?
Well, it's a different. We do use the lot on the left side. That lot is used for tractor trailers that are open. You know, the beds are open and they can come up and
Okay.
Pull them off with a forklift.
Okay.
The trucks that back in there are enclosed vehicles and you have to drive into the vehicle and pull it out. And that, on that side is where the you know.
Okay.
Lift is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the map. I was looking at the, yeah, so. Um, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we do have both. We have both types coming in and out, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, I would encourage you to, if you can, come again next week or to email to these folks with any concerns that you still have.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Were you interested in coming up? All right, come on up. Next month. Next, I'm, scratch that. For the May meeting.
Yeah, for the meeting.
Yeah, there'll be one of each.
Good evening. My name is Jim Spear. I own several properties on Brown Street, both across the street from the proposed area and on the western border of the property. Pretty concerned, this, this is actually a railroad right-of-way that used to come in, that used to come into my property. The, some of the railroad ties and stuff are still in there and have owned the property since 95. And we have actually taken care of this property completely. The railroad's never done any maintenance on it. We've taken down overgrown trees. We pushed over piles of hills and stuff. The Smiths just put a brand-new driveway last year, a, a brand-new access to back trailer, tractor trailers into that property and they do go over that right-of-way. And we've, we've taken care of that property for 25 years. So.
Are you referring to 30?
Well, there's no such thing as 30. I mean, this is just a, a newly, newly conjured-up tax map number or whatever, because there is no taxes on it. There's nothing, there's nothing in the city records on any of the property or.
It is a parcel now.
Well, like I said, it just, all of a sudden, it's a property, but.
It is.
I have, I have a, a map of like, if the tower fell over, how, how many properties it would affect. I know they have a safety, safety mechanism in place, but that doesn't mean the bottom portion can't knock over. It's, you know, they're, they're making it breakaway maybe at some wind speeds or whatever. And, and a tower, even if it's hinged, isn't going to fall straight down. It's going to, it's going to move. If it came down with wind, it could blow it 100 feet. I mean, this, this parcel, they're asking for a variance of almost 50% of what the variance should be. It's not like they're asking for 10 feet. They're not asking for 15 feet. They're asking for half the distance of the setback, both height and width from two properties that we've been getting along in the street for 30 years. So I have a map, if anybody cares to see it, of how, how far it would go if it fell 100 feet. They also said there's a lightning rod on top. I mean, so it's probably even more than 110 feet. You could ask that question too. There's, you know, so I think that projects even higher than 110 feet. So, I mean.
You want to, or you will, can you pass that around, please? If you just hand it to Ernie or that'd be great.
The property marked in the blue is the Smiths warehouse and the red stuff is all stuff that I own around it.
Did you say you own the property where the Smiths business is?
No, adjacent to it. Like, they're putting that between our two properties. You, you can see the diagram. I mean, I own across the street. You know, I own 500 feet on one side of the street and I own probably you know, close to 500 feet on the other side also. Like I said, I've been maintaining that property since 1985. So we have a trucking company that, that uses the property on that side of the street also that has tractor trailers. They have lowboys, they have excavators, they have dump trucks. And so we, you know, we've been using that forever and it is, you know, I could actually have a claim for adverse possession, I'd think. Because we've been clearing it way more than 10 years.
Anything else, Jim?
No, that'll, I mean, that's, my concerns is we're, we're, we're not, we're not asking for a variance. We're asking to throw out our codes. That's what they are.
Well, one of the responses, one of the pieces of equipment or documentation we're asking for is the, how it hinges and falls, so. We'll have more information.
The, the bottom. The the bottom can fall, too. I mean, it's not like it only can, only the top can topple. I mean, there, there's they're saying, yeah, maybe if the top fails, it'll fall, but what happens if the whole thing falls? Who knows?
I believe, I believe they could answer that question if asked it directly.
I don't think they can answer mother nature, you know?
We don't get a hundred and ten miles an hour wind very often.
Well, the property across the street, if you want to look at it, it, we had a microburst and it took the, the, the roofs off my buildings that were all around, all around storage buildings and it blew them into the wires. And they had been there, they'd been there for thirty years and that, that property is just across the street. So we do get them once in a while. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against, or does the applicant have any more comments for us today? If you're, if you're good, I'm, I think we're you have more questions for the applicant? Come on back up here. Go right ahead.
All right, can you tell us about the lightning rod?
Yes, so the lightning rod is a ten foot rod that will be attached to the top of the tower. Essentially, the purpose of the lightning rod is in the case of, you know, a lightning storm, the lightning isn't hitting the antenna itself, it's hitting the rod. So yes, that would be ten feet on top of the tower itself.
So on top of the a hundred and ten feet, potentially?
Correct. It's, I I don't think that, you know, typically lightning rods are counted in the height of the tower itself, but yes, it would be ten feet on top of the one hundred and ten feet.
Thank you. And then one of the speakers raised concerns regarding health.
Yes.
About that.
So we are, so the FCC sets limits regarding RF exposure, electromagnetic energy exposure that, you know, telecommunications carriers are you know, permitted to emit in these types of facilities. We are well within those limits set by the FCC and that's set forth in exhibit G of the application.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're reading?
I was reading some more.
Okay. We still have other items to do, but I I think we're probably going to consider getting into them in the, in the next meeting. Since we have requested follow-up information from you folks, I think that we would like to continue where I'm speaking. We'll have to make a motion to do so, but I think we're leaning towards tabling this till next month's meeting to have a chance to look at the documentation presented before we go any further. And further steps are, we have to look at some issues related to seeker. So
send them up discussion before we discuss a motion to table.
Yeah, I mean, you can choose to table it, you can choose to do it tonight. Obviously, the public hearing is going to continue to the next meeting with the additional information coming.
Okay. Is is anyone interested in moving forward with discussions and motions leading to a decision tonight? I see we're more leaning towards looking at the documentation, okay, that I would like to make a motion to table thirty Brown's area of variances for height and fall zone till the May meeting. Could I get a second please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What, do you know the date of next month's meeting? Is it the fourteenth? May fourteenth?
It's May fourteenth.
Okay, so mark it on your calendars. And we'll see you then. Meanwhile, do I need to move to to temporarily close the public meeting?
Yeah, you just leave it open.
So the meeting is, the public meeting is still open and will resume on our next meeting when we call to order. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business?
No.
Yeah, let me ask Shalan. Can we request copies of the letters that the planning commission had regarding their concerns?
Yeah, we can, we can add it to the base camp.
Okay, that'd be great. I don't know if you have to ask Nick first before you do that, but.
Yeah, I, I think Tito like uploaded all the materials, but since we didn't specifically get a letter for ZBA, I think he didn't like submit them because.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I I must admit, I my investigation of base camp was a tad cursory this month, so I did not see some of the exhibits you were looking at.
Yep. I didn't dig that deep.
Yeah.
Those ones that could see that are multicolor are twenty-eight of seventy, twenty-nine or seventy.
Yeah, the coverage maps are very detailed and very a lot of stuff in there.
It's on the city switch. That's the one that's on, that's why I didn't see it. I didn't go down to the city switch.
I meant, how about if we, I'll make a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.